From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 26th, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. The board will reconvene. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? We will begin our meeting with a salute to the flag, and then I'll ask you to stand in a moment for that, and then after we're done with the flag salute, could you please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, and meditation? I'd like us to remember this morning the loss of a former Kern County Supervisor and Mayor for the city of Bakersfield, Mary Kay Shell, whose funeral was just a couple of days ago. She was a fabulous person and a great servant to our community, so let's remember her as we do our moment of silence. Our flag salute this morning is going to be led by LeAnn Cook, who is Chief of Staff for District One Supervisor McLeeson. Ms. Cook?
Salute, pledge: I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We'll begin our morning with our consent agenda. Consent items are considered to be routine by staff and are usually voted on all at once. They are indicated in the agenda with a CA above the item number. There are agendas, by the way, at the back of the room if you'd like to take a look at one of those. I'll indicate what those consent items are here in just a moment. If you have a question about an item on consent, you can come, I'll call for you to come forward in a moment and ask your question, and it'll be at the discretion of a member of the Board of Supervisors as to whether or not that item is pulled from the consent agenda. So beginning on page two of our agenda this morning, items one and two, and then items five through eight. On page three, all the items nine through sixteen. On page four, all the items seventeen through twenty-two. On page five, items twenty-three through twenty-nine. On page six, items thirty-three through thirty-five, and then item thirty-seven. On page seven, all the items thirty-eight through forty-four. On page eight, all the items forty-five through fifty-three. On page nine, fifty-four through sixty-two. And on page ten, items sixty-three and sixty-four. Are there any members of the public who have a question about any item that's on consent? I see a hand go up in the back. If anybody else has a question, would you make your way down to the front, please?
Chairman, I was going to ask if we could pull item one because I anticipated Ms. Keogh would be here, and it appears as though she's moving towards the podium. However you find appropriate to handle number one, I would like to hear from Liz on it.
Yes, Ms. Keogh, please come forward. It's been a while. Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Yes, sir. I was going to mention it's been a while. The Supervisor's completely correct. That was my intention, was to ask that you pull item number one so that I can speak to the nomination.
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Okay, so item number will be pulled. You can speak on that in just a few minutes.
Thank you very much.
We'll take it up in the order that it's on the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman.
Are there any other members of the public that have a question about an item this morning? Okay, then I'll return to the board. Supervisor Perez has requested that item number one be pulled from the consent vote, and I need to read into the record that I'm going to, I'm going to, I've lost the word, I'm going to abstain from item number twenty-seven because of a potential source of income to my family. So item number twenty-seven, I will not be voting on. So with that in mind, with item number twenty-one pulled, item number one, rather, pulled, is there a motion to proceed with a consent calendar? So, is there a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes?
Thank you very much. Okay, let's proceed then with our agenda. Item number one is the item that has been pulled. It's an appointment of Neil Sanapa as the at-large Member of the Animal Services Commission, term to expire February 28, 2021. Ms. Keogh, I believe you have a question. Is there a staff member here who can address the item for us? Ms. Keogh, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Maggard, Honorable Members of the Board, Ms. Kraus, Mr. Also, Mr. Nations. My name is Liz Keogh, K-E-O-G-H. I am a proud resident of the Fifth District, and I am here to thank Supervisor Perez for her nomination of Ms. Sanapa and to encourage the board to show their enthusiastic support for this nomination by voting unanimously. Mr. Sanapa has been active in the animal welfare activities in town for as long as I can remember. He is on the same page as the Board and the Director of Animal Services, as a founder of No Kill Kern, and you know that that's our goal, is to become no-kill by 2020. He has vast experience with clinics, vouchers, spay-neuter, all that boots-on-the-ground stuff, and he's been doing it for years. I think he will complement the areas of expertise that other commissioners have, and I think this is a wonderful nomination. I want to thank my supervisor, thank the board, and I want to thank Neil for agreeing to serve because, as you know, boards and commissions require time. It's a volunteer position, and I think we're very lucky to have him. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public?
Chairman, I had punged in to speak, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Keogh, come back down. I want to tell you something. As a longtime observer of the Fifth District, I know you'll appreciate this. KCET in Los Angeles is doing a documentary here on the redistricting that just occurred through the Maldiv case. So I was with them last night. We walked over to my childhood home, and my brother was standing outside, who I haven't seen in months. We walked up, the camera crew was there, they were catching these interactions. He asked me, "How are things going at the county?" We're catching up after a long time. He says to me, "Did you know the county does spay and neuter now?" And I thought of you, Liz. Your face came to mind because I thought it was so lovely that right here in the Fifth District, my brother is engaging in a service he would have never even known about before this incredible union of you and your army of activists and what we did and launched out of the Fifth District. So I was happy that he was able to inform me what the county is doing.
That's right.
That's how you know information has penetrated, that a service is important, that is being communicated, and I'm filled with gratitude for you, for what you've done, for how you've pushed my office to be a leader. Of course, remarkable leadership by Supervisor Scribner, as well, as you know. But I thought you would appreciate that you may appear in the documentary on the redistricting case as it implicated our spay-and-neuter efforts, beautifully and sort of magically, so. Thank you, Liz, for all that you have done, and this is a great appointment. Thank you for showing him the ropes.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comment with regard to item number one this morning? Don't see anyone, so we'll return to the board. Item number one, then, is recommended action is to make the appointment of Neil Sanapa as the at-large Member of Animal Services Commission.
Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes?
Thank you very much. Next up is public presentations. We offer an opportunity for the public to speak to us this morning about any matter that's not on our agenda this morning. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment to us? Good morning. We offer two minutes to each member. Please proceed. Can you please give us your name for the record?
Good morning. My name is TJ Esposito, businessman, taxpayer, father of five, and certified cannabis expert here in Kern County. For nearly a year, we have warned the public that one particular supervisor has an active and long-term relationship with some of the most notorious dispensary owners in town. Truth be told, this secret and nefarious relationship has festered for the last decade, maybe longer. Aside from all the circus theatrics surrounding cannabis in Kern County that have gone on inside this boardroom, what is happening today is truly tragic for our community. Another monopoly like Measure G, which was shot down by the courts and cost taxpayers millions, is being pushed on us again by you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I am providing the first set of evidence that shows Oildale pot shop owner Jennifer Romandia conveniently listed as a housewife in your campaign reports. Mike, this is a funder of your campaign for reelection and is spearheading the fundraising for your political projects in Oildale. These individuals are listed in the Kern County's EIR as pot shop stakeholders, who, we should add mysteriously, appeared on the pot shop list after contributing to Mr. Maggard in reflection efforts, reelection efforts in Oildale. Chairman, what happened between the time you angrily said medicinal marijuana patients urinate, defecate, and commit sexual acts around dispensaries? What changed your mind from the moment you called them criminals? Was it the advice of your cannabis consultant, Kim Schaefer, who was listed in your campaign reports as your campaign manager? And as a CPA, you should know the difference between a campaign manager and a web developer. We can no longer trust you to do the right thing, and we can no longer afford-
Esposito, your time has expired. Please have a seat.
Okay, and all the evidence is listed right there, Mr. Maggard.
Please have a seat, Mr. Esposito. Thank you. There have been allegations of this from time to time.
It's right there on your 460.
Please have a seat, Mr. Esposito. If you don't comply, we'll have you removed from the room. Mr. Abasi, please give us your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is David Abasi with the Central Valley Cannabis Association and Central Valley Citizens for Responsible Government. I'm here today to talk about the cannabis monopoly that you are putting forward. It was previously six, now it's seven dispensaries, and I know which seven dispensaries you have in mind. It's the ones that contributed to you. And now, as TJ has shared, we now have actual proof that Supervisor Mike Maggard has received contributions from a cannabis group. In fact, it says on his 460, Jennifer Romandia, who is the manager, and her husband is the CEO, for The Crop, which is a dispensary, a medical marijuana dispensary in Oildale. This dispensary has provided proofs, such as a seller's permit and a building lease. Green Cross Collective of North Bakersfield and Green Cross Collective of Kern County are two dispensaries that were established prior to this, prior to them, prior to moratoriums, and they showed more proof than just a seller's permit and a business license. But your planning department has not issued us a permit or an authorization here locally. So it shows that people are being selective here with choosing who gets to be on this list and who doesn't. We have had more proof provided, and we are still waiting for Lorelei Oviat, the planning director, to get back to us. She never did. So now, I'd like to also put this on the record, Mr. Maggard, proof that you've received money from a cannabis group. Also, why are you so intent on regulating? You know nothing about cannabis, admittedly. And here I am, not a certified expert, but an actual expert in cannabis and cannabis regulations. I've studied over a dozen ordinances from various cities and counties and know them inside and out. I ask that you add me to the subcommittee. Your own county council asked me, "What's, is this type nine license in our ordinance?" We have a petition we're circulating also, and our ordinance is more conservative, somewhat it's what you want, and Mr. Nations doesn't even know what a type nine license is. You guys aren't up to date on what the state regulations are. So I demand that you add me to the committee.
Mr. Abasi, if you do not stop your comments, we'll have you removed from the room.
Your time is up, Mr. Maggard.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak this morning about an item not otherwise on our agenda? As much as these allegations have been made, there is no proof that there is a conflict because there is no conflict. It's been investigated by the District Attorney's Office, and I look forward to their report as to what they find. Yes, could you please give us your name for the record?
Good morning. My name is Kate Usee, and I'm with the ADA KC. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. On a happy note, I'm here to tell something different. In our community, we have over 11,000 people that have been affected by Alzheimer's or dementia. We have a caregivers, a free caregiver seminar on Saturday at Hodel's, and I'd like each of you to have a flyer, and please help us spread the word as our community has built a absolutely beautiful building on the corner of Buena Vista and Campus Park. We urge all caregivers to come and get the free support that they need in our community to help them along the journey. I also would like to introduce you to Becca Montoya. She's my new marketing and salesperson, so she probably will be coming to see each and every one of you eventually. And again, we invite you all to attend any of our events, and thank you very much for your support of ADA KC and all the nonprofits in our community. We could not do what we do without your support. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Any other members of the public wish to talk to us about an item not otherwise on our agenda this morning? Good morning. Could you give us your name for the record?
My name is Chad Garcia. I'm a combat vet, served in the US Army from 2001, 2014. This is the, it's my medication that the VA gives me. Each medication has a side effect. I had to dig this out. I haven't taken it in about three years, which coincides with the date that I quit drinking In regards to the politics of cannabis and whatnot, I'd rather not speak on that. I just want to speak on behalf of my experience. This is probably my first public admittance that I've been using cannabis, medicinal cannabis, for about three years now. In that time, I've developed a successful radio career. I have been involved in my community, been active in helping my community with suicide awareness, with veteran advocacy. Cannabis has changed my life for the better when used properly. And I'm all for regulation, and I'm all for veterans having the choice to not carry around bags like this, with each medication with the side effect, making them feel not like the man that wore the uniform. I don't know what just went on, but I will tell you this: This product, this substance works when used correctly. It's not a drug. I don't defecate anywhere, except inside my home. I don't do any kind of vile acts in front of anybody. I simply want to be a contributing member to my community, which I think I've proven. Actions speak louder than words. And I know that the conversation's going to continue until November, and rather than everybody think that the argument is about what just happened, I want you all to hear it from me. I don't carry this around anymore. I use this substance correctly. There's people in this room standing behind me who know me and who know how serious I am about different advocacy programs I'm involved in, and without cannabis in my life, taking away that pain, the anxiety, I don't think I'd be able to be the man standing here today. Thank you all for serving our community, and thank you everybody for coming today.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us this morning about any items not otherwise on our agenda? Yes, Supervisor Gleeson.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, thank you for coming in. I want to assure you that the previous person's talking had no impact on my commitment to focus a capability so that can support people like you who are in need of that assistance. And I think we're going to work hard to make sure that you have that. The focus is on you, sir, not on those other folks. Thank you.
Okay, let's return to the board, then. Do any members of the board have a report or a comment they'd like to make before we proceed with this morning's proceedings? Don't see anyone, so let's proceed now on to item number 30 on page five of our agenda. It is the proposed preliminary recommended budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Mr. Also, are you going to begin this discussion?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman Maggard and members of the board. This morning, we're before you to recommend a preliminary fiscal year 2018-19 county budget, which is essentially a placeholder budget. While your board considers action on a final county budget in late August, there'll be a number of public comment periods and meetings between now and then, and Nancy will, I'm sorry, Ms. Lawson, our assistant CAO, will discuss that in her comments. I want to thank Ms. Lawson and her entire budget team in my office for all the great work that they do putting the budget together. This recommended budget continues to address the structural deficit in the county's general fund that began in FY 1617, resulting in a severe decline in property tax revenue related to oil and gas properties. The initial $44.5 million deficit in the county's general fund is now projected to be 18.8 million in fiscal year 1819. We're also utilizing $6 million less in county reserves than was initially planned. While costs related to maintaining effective countywide operational and staffing levels for our sheriff's department, along with the costs of other critical public safety services such as fire, are challenging our efforts to resolve the deficit. Progress continues to be made, and your board's four-year deficit mitigation plan remains on target. The cooperative spirit of your department heads, their leadership, and the hard work of their staff to be innovative and more efficient has been critical to the success of our deficit mitigation plan for the general fund. The budget recommendation before you prioritizes community safety by maintaining sheriff's department and fire department operations and staffing levels countywide. While most county departments are taking a 2.5% reduction in funding this year, critical public safety departments like the sheriff's department and fire departments were backfilled with one-time county reserves to maintain operational efficacy. The costs associated with both of these critical safety services continues to rise, again challenging our efforts to address deficits and to maintain service levels in other critical service areas of the county. This recommendation proposes no reductions in operations or services for the sheriff's department. It fully funds a third consecutive sheriff's training academy in just the last two years, helping put more deputies on the streets and communities across our county, and it considers efforts underway to address recruitment and retention challenges within the department. This recommendation maintains fire department service levels countywide and fully funds all firefighter positions, all fire stations, and proposes no reductions in operations or services for the third consecutive year. This budget continues to prioritize quality, safe recreational opportunities for county residents through improvement of our parks. It provides substantial new funding for improvement of county roads and expansion of mental health and substance abuse programs. It maintains library services at current year hours of operation, and it fully maintains operations and staffing levels for our animal services department countywide, including funding for spay and neuter programs. Additionally and importantly, this budget recommendation continues progress toward resolving the structural deficit. It avoids layoffs and supports the launch current efforts to promote efficiencies and savings in our countywide Lean Six Sigma effort, which is ongoing. While the fire department's budget for 2018-19 is balanced, the department continues to be challenged with a structural deficit that is estimated today at $7.5 million, and that number will depend on year-end revenue collections. It's likely to change. Your general fund is contributing 6.1 today. Your general fund is contributing 6.1 today, $6.1 million in one-time reserves toward that deficit to address rising personnel costs associated to recent pension cost escalation for our firefighters. To resolve the fire fund's structural deficit and its reliance on general fund resources for a bailout, it is imperative that ongoing cost reductions and/or sustainable and steady revenue be identified immediately. Implementation of recommendations provided by recent operational analysis, your board order of our fire department is crucial. And the county's fire chief and his leadership team, with regular reporting to my office and your board on the progress of that, those recommendations must be pursued with vigor. It is recommended that the county's fire chief, in full cooperation with my office, develop a mitigation plan to address the department's deficit that incorporates these recommendations. Concurrently, my office, along with the county's fire chief, will continue to engage the fire department's employee union in an effort to negotiate long-term cost savings, principally the elimination of all overpayments in overtime paid to our firefighters. The county currently pays overtime at a rate over and above what is required under federal law. To be clear, with this change we are seeking, our firefighters would continue to earn significant overtime pay. It's part of the job. In many cases, overtime paid out to our firefighters is over 100% of their base pay. That will continue. We are simply seeking to eliminate a very small percentage that is paid out beyond what is required under federal law. That would give us substantial year-over-year savings in our fire fund, and it's needed. Again, we have many challenges, but we continue to make progress in addressing the general fund deficit while also delivering on crucial public safety service priorities. My office will continue to be guided by three very specific countywide strategic initiatives in the work that we do. We will enhance the quality of life for Kern County residents, folks that we serve. We'll become a model of excellence in managing our business and our people, and we are fostering a culture of innovation here at the county. All of our decisions are currently guided by those three objectives. We will continue to practice restrictive hiring of staff throughout the county, along with employing our strategy of hiring from within in an effort to achieve year-over-year cost savings. We will be fully committed to our launch current initiative, applying the principles of Lean Six Sigma to the work that we do everywhere in the county in order to streamline processes, bolster efficiency, and to achieve significant cost savings. We have begun discussions with our labor partners on meaningful changes to how the county provides healthcare benefits to our employees, changes that have the potential to produce millions of dollars in savings annually over the next few years, while maintaining options, the level of care, and positive health outcomes that all of our employees deserve and expect. We will continue to make decisions that strengthen the county's overall long-term fiscal position, whether that is with external stakeholders or with our labor partners. And with that, thank you for your consideration this morning. I'll hand it over to our Assistant Chief Administrative Officer, Nancy Lawson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We are pleased to present to you balanced preliminary recommended budgets for both the general and fire funds. Today is the first of four public meetings to discuss the 2018-19 county budget. The total preliminary county budget is $2.6 billion. The general fund budget, which is the main operating fund of the county, totals $771 million. The county fire fund budget totals $145 million. The combined updated structural deficit for these two funds totals $26.3 million, which represents a 58% resolve of the county's deficit to date. You may recall that the preliminary document before you today is not intended to be modified as it is temporary until the budget is adopted in August. Our office will incorporate any board direction received today in the final recommended budget to be presented in August. The budget will also be revised for budget hearings to account for final 2017-18 year-end fund balances and the assessor's final assessment rule. The net general fund cost allocation to departments is $364 million, or 2.15% more than last fiscal year. This increase is primarily attributed to pension cost increases for safety employees and increased medical and mental health services costs for the new justice facility. In addition to $6.5 million in NGFC reductions for departments this year, this, well, next year, it is estimated that another $10 million in net fund balance carryforward and $10 million in designations will be needed towards operations to preserve essential public services. While the ongoing structural deficit is projected at $26.3 million, the mitigation plan approved by your board in fiscal year 1617 continues to make progress towards resolve. Current reserves total $144 million. The projected use of reserves over the four-year plan is currently $44 million, which, as Mr. Alsop mentioned earlier, is nearly $6 million less than we originally estimated at the start of the mitigation plan. Property tax revenue for the general fund is estimated to increase by nearly $7 million. The increase is largely contributing to balancing the budget with less use of general fund reserves. In January, using a $63 per barrel price of oil, the assessor projected a potential increase in oil and gas assessments by 3.3%. The assessor staff is working diligently to close the roll by June 30th. It is important to note that the preliminary budget does not include any allocation to major maintenance or capital projects. Staff are prioritizing critical needs that will be assessed after year-end when we know the final fund balance carryforward available to allocate to those needs. The next public meeting to discuss the fiscal year 1819 budget is scheduled for Monday, July 23rd, at 6:00 PM in the evening. Here in the board chambers to hear public comment. Then again, Tuesday, July 24th. And finally, budget hearings will commence on Tuesday, August 28th, at 9:00 AM. The recommendation for this item is to approve the preliminary recommended budget for fiscal year 1819 as presented. That concludes our prepared comments, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Do any members of the board have a question or a comment before we go to the public? Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to make comment to us this morning about any, about this matter that is before us, this budget report? How many people would like to make comment? We have an interpreter here who can speak Spanish. Would that be helpful?
Yes, thank you so much.
Mr. Alsop, I believe that is Maria Olvera. Is Ms. Olvera handy? Ms. Olvera, could you please come forward and explain on the microphone that we're offering an opportunity for the public to make comment about the budget report? Hold on just a second, Ms. Olvera. I don't think it's working. It's, I don't think it's still working. Why don't you just come to the other microphone, and we'll get that microphone working for you in just a second.
I'm sorry. Okay. Si me pueden escuchar? Okay. Se está ofreciendo una oportunidad para que el público pase y dé su opinión sobre estos puntos que estuvieron tocando, y si alguien necesita un intérprete, aquí estoy disponible para ustedes. Mi nombre es Maria Olvera.
Thank you, Ms. Olvera. Sir, would you like us to use an interpreter for you?
I'm okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Could you please give us your name for the record and proceed?
Gustavo Aguirre. I just want to thank Supervisor Perez for all these years supporting her District Five and all the agencies at the county for being willing to meet with the community groups, including Mr. Alsop and Laura Ly, you know, all of the agencies. About the budget, we, you know, we know and we heard that over 50% of the general fund goes to sheriff or safety, mainly for sheriff, and we've heard this morning that, you know, trying, sheriff is trying to increase that. And for the community, we see that safety not only comes in the form of sheriff, but there are other ways that can a community be more safer, like, you know, streets, lights, good parks with lights, you know, a lot of other pieces that other, other people and residents are going to do that. But we want you, the supervisors, to consider that. I think a shift of how the money is used at the county need to start moving that way that, you know, safety is not only sheriff. Yes, we need sheriff, but we need to improve and invest in our communities to switch that. And that's, that's the community vision that we put it together. We are going to share with you the document, and it's coming from several communities throughout the county. And I know, Mr. Couch, you were on one of our meetings with Mr. Alsop. You may have a copy. If not, we are going to share one with you. But we really ask you to consider that. We understand, you know, that the budget is tight, but we don't want you to spend extra money or, you know, being more that, but, you know, switching those funds that the county have. So the, the safety of our communities is more sustainable, not based on sheriff, but based on the infrastructure that the communities have. And I'm going to share some of the documents for you, and we hope that, you know, all the supervisors and, and the agents will continue collaborating with us, you know, so the community and residents can have the opportunity to share, you know, their vision of how the, the county monies shall be invested in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Who would be next? Would you like the use of an interpreter, sir?
No, thank you.
Okay. Please give us your name for the record.
My name is Cesar Aguirre. I am a community organizer with the Central California Environmental Justice Network. I'm here to kind of reflect and also make similar asks. Like Gustavo stated, we want not to increase money, but to reallocate the money so it's more equitably spread out. And the focus is on more of the people that need it rather than the people that expect it because they have been receiving it. My ask is that we invest at least a minimum of 75% of the $2 million allocated in the 2017 fiscal year directly to disadvantaged communities as chosen by the California Virus Screen 3.0, and also communities within a half-mile area of that. And this number is to address the, the way it has been unequitably spread in the last 10 years. 63% of those funds have been given to parks within, to regional parks or parks within city limits. And more rural communities have expressed things that their parks are in need, and I have a small list of things that they have prioritized and would like to see in their parks. The list includes prioritizing park maintenance, lights in public spaces, soccer facilities and programs, youth and senior recreational programs, job training and mentoring programs, and community centers that can accommodate these activities. Like I said, this isn't something that we want to increase money for. We just want to more fairly reallocate the monies so that the areas that have seen this and enjoy these type of services can share that with the areas that have never seen this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Couch.
Was your last name Aguirre, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Ma'am, hold on just a second, ma'am, okay? Mr. Cesar Aguirre, did you have a document you wanted to give us?
No.
No? Okay.
What my asks were part of the documents that were previously given.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Audie Inka Glover, and I am with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Our second ask is that, beginning fiscal year 2018, the county should dedicate at minimum 75% of the parks and recreation funding towards community parks and recreation activities, maintenance, staff, operation in the most disadvantaged communities. Making this commitment in the 2018 fiscal year budget will mark a significant shift towards reversing impacts of the lack of infrastructure in parks and recreation investments seen by these communities over the past decade and even earlier. Park space and recreation programs are an example of an important community asset that contributes to happier, healthier, and safer communities. For example, well-maintained and operated park amenities provide families with low-cost options for physical activity and provide positive options for youth development. Ultimately, an investment like this will directly combat neglect that has contributed to criminal activity in such public spaces. There is a direct correlation in more investment in these communities, ultimately leading to safer communities. We, as organizations, working directly with residents, are more than happy to work with county staff to see that these investments take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olvera, would you please announce with the public that if anybody that wants to make comment needs the use of interpreter for them to tell you that as they go by, so I won't have to ask every person?
Todas las personas que están aquí para hacer un comentario y que necesiten un intérprete, pueden usar un intérprete, y tienen que usar un intérprete.
Thank you very much. Could you please give us your name and proceed?
Good morning, supervisors and chairman. My name is Chelsea Tu, last name is Tu. I'm with the Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment. I'm here to talk to you about recommendation number three on our budget platform. Another basic community asset that many low-income communities and as well as unincorporated communities in Kern County do not have an urgently need. I'm talking about paving streets in unincorporated areas outside of Delano on Lido Avenue, as well as basic crosswalks and lights that children need in order to get to their homes safely at night in South Kern. Despite many decades of never seeing any basic street infrastructure and complete street investments in their communities, we've seen that Kern County has spent over 80% of its roads and streets funding on paving streets within city boundaries. In the recent proposed budget that was just released, the Roads Division is also proposing to spend $3.6 million of the multiple millions of dollars coming from SB 1 on 22 new vehicles and other costly equipment. I want to take this moment to ask you to reflect on what $3.6 million would mean for a low-income community in an unincorporated area breathing pollution just to have a crosswalk or light or bicycling so that families can go to dinner with, in, in their grandmother's home without fearing that somebody might have been struck by a fast-moving car, as there are many in Kern County, versus purchasing new vehicles for Roads Division staff? And how to balance that? So in our, in our research as well, we found that it's been very difficult to not only see a transparent list of roads and street spending and as well as any methodology in how the Division spends money. We've been in many conversations with the Roads Division as well as other county staff on wanting to increase transparency as well as the public accountability, and also create a methodology for, for spending roads and streets money in an equitable way, as my colleagues have discussed. So in summary, we'd like to continue working with you, starting this fiscal year, to address the inequities that low-income communities and unincorporated communities in Kern County face. We request that the county dedicate a meaningful portion of the roads and streets budget towards building and maintaining street infrastructure in the most underserved communities. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Couch.
Ms. Tu, would you mind providing your contact information to Mr. Alsop right here? I would like to talk to you specifically about Lido Avenue that you mentioned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please give us your name for the record and proceed?
Yes, good morning. My name is Patricia Leal, L-E-A-L, and I'm with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Good morning. Thank you again for allowing us to make public comments. Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, we've been here numerous times. We work directly with community residents of South Kern, which include Greenfield, Rexland, Lamont, and unincorporated area of Arvin and surrounding areas. And along with building healthy communities, comunidades unidas, we are a collaborative that directly looks at the budget amongst other things like the general plan, the regional transportation plan, plans that really impact our community and growth and investments. transportation plan, plans that really impact our community and growth and investments. And part of our comments today, it's based on priorities from community residents we work directly with, along with organizations like Advancement Project, which is an organization that focuses on doing budget analysis. And this is where our comments are coming from. And we welcome working with the different departments, along with Ryan, the CEO, to continue to invest in the priorities that community residents continue to highlight. And on the budget platform that you have in front, well, before I go into that, after me, community residents from the communities we work with will make comments based on their specific needs. And I really do hope that you all really listen carefully in regards to what their priorities are because you, as our representatives, have that power and have that moral duty to really invest in the priorities that your constituents are asking and demanding for. In front of you, you have a budget platform. That budget platform, I'll be speaking on item number four. And item number four really looks into the flooding issue in our communities like Lamont, Weed Patch, and Arvin. We are aware that the county did a feasibility study, the Caliente Creek Study, last year. And we thank the county for taking that time to really look into that issue and problem. We also understand that the flooding, the Caliente Creek Study, in order to implement it, it's very costly. And we hear the county on that end. We hear that it's very costly, but what can we do together to work towards making that cost feasible? We thank Letizia Perez for working with outside sources to try to bring in funds to really look into that flooding issue. But we also demand, based on item number four, that the county allocate funds set aside on a yearly, annual basis to be able to get to that cost feasibility and be able to really look at a feasible solution long term. We understand this is not going to come next year, or this is going to be a solution within the next couple of years. But what we want to see is that the Board of Supervisors, along with the different departments, we're working together to make sure that we're allocating funds for this long-term solution for flooding issues that communities like Lamont and Arvin and Weed Patch face whenever there's a rainy season. So it's not a problem that we're able to estimate when a rainy season will come, but these impacts really affect students and community residents. Just two years, last year, students weren't able to go to school because it was flooded. Buses and cars weren't able to cross and take students to school. When you're having these issues and no money is being set aside for these priorities, it really taps into the values and morals and priorities of community residents. Are they really being heard? And that's what we're asking here today. And this is why we ask that you really take into consideration our comments, and we would like to see them reflected on this yearly budget. And we understand that these solutions will not come in one year, but we really do hope that we continue this conversation, and we start now. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please give us your name for the record and proceed?
Buenos dias. My name is Saul Ruiz. Soy presidente del Comité de Los Gil en Acción, y vengo a representar mi comunidad. Saul Ruiz.
My name is Saul Ruiz. I'm the representative of Los Gil's resident community vision for safety.
Y vengo a hacer peticiones para residentes de Los Gil que se dediquen fondos en el presupuesto de 2018, 2019 al condado de Kern para ayudar a nuestras necesidades de nuestra comunidad.
Okay. And I'm here to ask, that funding is set aside to assist the residents of Los Gil's and in the 2018, 19 budget.
Para poner señalamientos de alto de tráfico.
To put in place signal lights.
Para luces en las calles.
For street lighting.
Para que se levante la basura adecuadamente.
So that our waste is picked up regularly.
Para la limpieza de calles ahora solo usan sopladoras y capzan mucho polvo y contaminación.
When they clean the streets, they use blowers, and it causes dust to pick up, and it contributes to the contamination.
Para un puente patonal y para estudiantes cerca de la escuela para cruzar la carretera 46.
Okay, to put in place the bridge to help pedestrians and students to cross from school on Road 46.
Para parques seguros, no alcohol, y no juego de apuestas.
For safe parks, no alcohol and no gambling.
That's all, gracias.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Could you please give us your name for the record and proceed?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diana Mireles. Soy miembro del Comité Progreso de Lamont.
Good morning. My name is Myra Mireles. I'm part of the committee of Progreso in Lamont.
Hoy en este día estoy porque quiero que parte del dinero.
I'm here today because I would like part of the funding.
Se ha invertido en las comunidades en desventaja.
Would be allocated in parts where there's disadvantage.
Por ejemplo, mi comunidad.
For example, my community.
Necesitamos más mejoras en los parques.
We need betterment in our parks.
Necesitamos como algo recreacional para los jóvenes.
We need recreational activities for our youth.
No se asusten, no estoy pidiendo un Six Flags.
Don't be scared. I'm not asking for Six Flags.
Pedimos como una spray park.
We were asking for a spray park.
Unas canchas de football, soccer.
Soccer fields.
Necesitamos parte de lo que nosotros decimos la seguridad.
And part of what we're talking about is safety.
No es nada más los sheriffs.
It's not just the sheriff department.
Pero necesitamos más alumbramiento en las calles.
But we need more lightning in our streets.
Pensamos que eso va a evitar un poco el vandalismo.
We think that's going to help prevent vandalism.
Necesitamos como les mencioné antes, estas como el soccer field y el spray park.
So therefore, we need more parks and soccer fields, the spray park.
Para que así los jóvenes tengan algo en que entretenerse.
That way, the youth has something to keep their time with.
Otra preocupación en Lamont.
Other worry in Lamont?
Es son las calles.
Is the streets.
Están, no necesitamos nada más que tapen el hoyo.
We would like the holes in the streets to be covered.
Si nada más los tapan, al día siguiente ya está otra vez ahí.
We need more than just covering holes. They need to be repaired.
Yeah.
That would be, they cover them, and the next day they're open again.
Yeah. Porque eso no nos va a solucionar. Las calles están demasiado partidas ya.
Because covering the holes is not going to solve the problem. The streets in Lamont are already cracked.
Yeah. Quiero agradecer a la supervisora, Letizia Perez.
I would like to thank Letizia Perez.
Ryan, Alsop.
Ryan.
Lorley no está aquí presente.
Lorley is not present.
Yolanda Alcántara.
Oh! I'm sorry.
Yolanda Alcántara. Y además staff that has trabajado con nosotros como comunidad.
And other staff that has worked with us as a community.
Porque se sientan y escuchan nuestras necesidades.
Because they sit and listen to our needs.
Y como les dije una vez, nosotros comunidad, como comunidad.
And as I said before, as a community.
Estamos aquí para ayudar también.
We are here to help also.
Tocando puertas, hablando con la comunidad, lo que se necesita.
Knocking on doors, talking to the community, whatever is needed.
Un comentario a la mejor fuera de lo común.
A comment maybe out of order.
Yo les pido que yo sé que vienen las próximas elecciones.
I know that the next elections are coming up.
Por favor, no busquen votos.
Please do not look for votes.
Busquen la confianza de nosotros.
Look for our trust.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment this morning? How many more we'd like to talk regarding this item? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, very good. Could you make your way down to the front, please? Venga aquí, por favor.
You need an interpreter?
No, I'm speaking English. Good afternoon, sir. Good morning. Could you give us your name and proceed?
Thank you, Board, for having me here. My name is Temparo. I'm a resident of Lamont. I'm a member of Comité Progreso de Lamont. I'm here to ask you to, before you approve this financial document, it's necessary to look at the needs of the community. One of the needs that we need is investing in infrastructure in the roads due to flooding. Last year and the previous year with the storms, our community was basically cut off the main route to get to Bakersfield. This also affected mass transit to Lamont from Bakersfield. Most of the members in our community use mass transit to get to their doctor appointments here in Bakersfield. Without mass transit, they are not allowed to come. This is a disadvantage to our community. And we're just asking before you pass or approve to look into investing into both flooding prevention and also infrastructure due to mass transit. Because basically what was happening, members of the community, the routes were closed. Due to that, they would have to walk several miles to Fairfax Road, which is the nearing road, to help the bus to come to Bakersfield. That is unfair to them. When the routes and the stops are dedicated on their roads, they shouldn't be able, have to move to take another road to come to Bakersfield. And I'm just asking to look into investing in both flooding prevention and also infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Temparo. Good morning.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Estela Scott.
My name is Estela Scott.
Soy miembro del Comité para un mejor Arvin.
I'm a member of the committee for a better Arvin.
Estoy aquí porque la comunidad de Arvin está contenta.
I'm here because our community in Arvin is happy.
Porque después de tantos años llegaron a un arreglo, a un acuerdo, la ciudad de Arvin y el condado.
Because after many years, the city of Arvin and the county came to an agreement.
Para arreglar la calle Comanche.
To fix the Comanche Road.
Y les quiero pedir también por las calles que se están inundando y que nos afectan.
And I want to also ask you and beg you for the streets that are flooding, and they're not being fixed.
A Lamont y Arvin.
Lamont and Arvin.
Para nuestra comunidad, varias calles ocupan para ir a su trabajo.
To our community, it's very important because we need those roads to get to work.
Y principalmente la Edison.
Especially Edison.
Es una de las que se inundan cada vez de que hay lluvia.
One of the roads that floods whenever there's rain.
Y estoy aquí para pedirles que pongan atención en esas calles.
And I would like you to pay attention to those streets.
Porque están muy afectadas por las lluvias.
Because they are very affected by the flood.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Y les quería dejar esta.
And she wants to leave this to you.
Gracias.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Blanca Flores.
My name is Blanca Flores.
Collieres Campesinas.
With Farm Workers Leaders.
Y este día vengo a abogar por la transportación.
Today, I'm here to ask you about transportation.
Sobre todo la de Aquiles Field, que cuando cambiaron las rutas, se dieron afectadas muchas familias para ir a sus trabajos.
Especially here in Bakersfield, that were affected with the rain, many families were not able to get to work.
Tienen que levantarse cuando entran a las 7 de la mañana, y tienen que ir a las 4 de la mañana caminando.
Whenever they have to go into work at 7, they have to get up at 4:00 in the morning to walk.
No tienen transportación.
They don't have transportation.
Y están corriendo peligro.
And they're taking risks.
Uno, un testimonio, una amiga mía, la semana pasada casi la matan los perros porque tiene que irse caminando a su trabajo.
One of my friends said that she was almost killed by dogs because she has to go to work walking, and the dogs attacked her.
Y queremos que las rutas las estiendan sábado y domingo hasta las 8:00 de la noche porque no hay transportación después de las 6, 7:00 de la noche. Entonces, es muy necesario de que nos ayuden con esto para que amplíen la transportación a más altas horas o los fines de semana más tarde del horario.
And we would like transportation to extend their hours. There's no transportation after 7:30, and we would like to have transportation later, at later times.
También les doy las gracias, pero que nos tengan intérprete por esto que nosotras venimos aquí a abogar.
And I would like to thank you by having an interpreter because we're here to advocate.
Por todas las necesidades de la comunidad.
For all the needs of our community.
Y las personas no vienen porque no tienen quien les traduzca y no entienden nada de lo que se está hablando.
And many people don't come because they don't understand, and they don't understand what's happening, and they don't have anyone to come and translate for them.
Les doy las gracias y ojalá que nos ayuden con la petición.
And I thank you, and I wish you would hear my petition.
Feliz día.
Have a nice day.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Marta Gutiérrez.
Good morning. My name is Marta Gutiérrez.
Y venía a decirles si podrían hacer o ayudar a la comunidad, a la ciudad de Bequesfield y el sur de Kern. Yo soy representante de Lideres Campesinas del sur Kern.
Okay. And I would like to, I came here to beg you to please help our south side of our city. I'm representative of Lideres Campesinas of South Kern.
Y quería pedirles del alumbrado de la ciudad de Bequesfield.
I would like to ask you for help with lightning in our streets in Bakersfield.
Sí, en Bequesfield, la ciudad de Bequesfield y el sur Kern.
In the city of Bakersfield and South Kern.
Porque hay muchas calles muy oscuras.
There's many streets that are very dark.
A veces casi uno atropella a la gente.
Sometimes we almost run over people.
Y yo digo que hace falta alumbramiento y que no tiren tanta basura en la calle.
And we need more lighting and also clean up our streets from trash.
Por falta de alumbrado, yo pienso que es el tiradero de basura de muebles y toda la cosa.
And I think it's because of the lack of lighting that people dispose of trash and waste and furniture.
Y también quería pedirles de favor si pueden ayudar o hacer una transportación para los trabajadores del campo, que antes lo había y ahora ya no lo hay, y para que no pasen tantos accidentes con las personas, que hay veces que se matan nomás por, no sé.
Okay. And I would like to see if there's a way you can help with transportation for farmworkers to get to work. There used to be an assistance.
Sí, como camiones de esos que transportaban a los trabajadores a los files.
Oh, van pools that used to take farmworkers to the fields, and now there is no van pool system to assist the farmworkers. And sometimes they have accidents.
Pienso que es todo, y muchas gracias, y les deseo un feliz día.
And this is all, and I thank you very much. Have a happy day.
Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Dora Hernandez Hara. I'm from the Mexican Colony in Shafta, and we're one of the communities that's grossly underserved. I have a petition for the Kern County Board of Supervisors to allocate funding to several services that we are in dire need of, and to ask our supervisor to actively seek funding for these needs. One of the major ones is infrastructure. Refugio, we'll be talking about traffic control and safety and roadways. One of them, we have curb and gutter, but a lot of our indigent population cannot afford to install sidewalks. So we are in dire need of funding for that through the county and to make it accessible to the handicap and the elderly. My mom is 92 years old, and when she tries to take a walk in Uh, my mom is 92 years old and we, when she tries to take a walk in the community, pushing her chair, she has to walk in the street because we have no other place for her to walk. We need to improve our lighting system and, uh, try to seek funding through the, the county for that. We have a county service area, so we are funding that right now. Uh, and we need something, uh, some kind of funding for housing rehab programs and an affordable home buyer program. And we are in dire need of recreation for, for our young and elderly alike. Uh, community center, park, uh, something. Our children, our youth play in the streets and we have a dire, we have a very big problem with a lot of, uh, speeding, uh, drivers and that's the only place that our kids can play in on the street. Along with the safety issue, uh, we have mediocre service from, uh, the sheriff's department. So we would like to, um, find out if there's any way that you could, uh, I don't know, subcontract with the Shafter Police Department so they could serve, service our community and, uh, to help us attack the drug problem, which is very prominent in, uh, in our community. Another big problem is animal control. Um, we have to get service from the center on Fruitvale Avenue when the animal shelter for Shafter is just, uh, about a half mile down the road. So we would like to find out if you could make that, uh, facility available to residents of the Mexican colony so we could utilize their services. Um, there was an incident where there was a pit bull running rampant and he, he was chasing the residents and he almost bit one of my friends. And it took us months to have, uh, that animal, uh, contained, you know, taken to the shelter. Uh, so it's, uh, we have a lot of problems with animals. They come and dump their, uh, unwanted dogs and cats and there's no way that we can get rid of them. Uh, we can't use that animal control, so that is one of the things that we would like you to check into if you can. Thank you for your attention and I have this petition for the board.
Supervisor Perez, would you like to speak to this person?
Uh, thank you so much. I wanted to just briefly address the folks that came forward today, people that have, uh, been, uh, working very hard, passionately and authentically in the district that is no longer technically mine because of our redistricting suit that occurred. Uh, but I thank you so much for your passion, your love, your authentic care and devotion to all people in Kern County, but in particular the most disadvantaged communities. So I want you to know that I will remain your ally. I am your friend. I will continue to help you in any way that I can in conjunction with your new supervisor. Uh, and at some point, we will give a reporter update where we are on the flooding crisis, uh, funding that we have been seeking in a very sophisticated and deliberate manner with many entities in Kern County that I'm quite proud of. So, uh, we'll give you an update on that shortly. Uh, but thank you. I appreciate you being here and I want you to know my door is always open to you and I will work with your new supervisor very closely to ensure that nothing falls, uh, through the cracks or, uh, that in any way there's any problem in the transition with this historic change that we all have to embrace and make the most of. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Refugio Valencia.
Good morning. My name is Refugio Valencia.
Uh, yo soy un organizador comunitario para Centro en Raza, Pobreza y el Medio Ambiente.
I'm, I'm a representative of Centro y Raza. Pobreza y el Medio Ambiente, which means, uh, for the center of the raza and, uh, and the environment.
Yeah, Center of Race, Poverty and the Environment.
Environment.
Uh, yo estoy trabajando con la comunidad que acaba de mencionar la señora Dora. Es la colonia mexicana en Shafter.
I work with the community that, um, Ms. Dora spoke about in Shafter.
Uh, esta, esta comunidad, yo creo que para ustedes es nueva, nunca la habían escuchado.
Maybe you've never heard about our community. It's probably new to you.
Y hemos estado escuchando parte de las necesidades que tiene cada una de las comunidades que se han mencionado hoy esta mañana.
And we've been listening to part of the needs that, that some of the communities have been mentioning this morning.
Mejoras en los parques.
Betterment in the parks.
Mejoras en las calles.
And the streets.
Y en esta comunidad, en la colonia mexicana.
And in this community, in the Mexican community.
No es diferente.
It's not different.
También tienen las mismas necesidades.
It also has the same needs.
Solo una que es muy diferente.
There's only one that is very different.
Ellos ni siquiera tienen un parque.
They don't even have a park.
Y aparte también, como se ha estado mencionando de la seguridad.
And also, as it has been, been mentioning, uh, about the security and the safety.
La comunidad de la colonia mexicana ha estado mencionando la inseguridad.
The, the Mexican colonia has been talking about the insecurity.
Porque en esa, en esa área se concentra mucha, mucha drogadicción.
Because in that area, a lot of drug addicts concentrate in that area.
Por qué? Porque esta comunidad ni siquiera, ni siquiera tiene alumbrado.
Because in this community, there's no street lining.
Sí lo tienen, están los postes pero no trabajan bien.
We have the posts and the lights, but they don't work.
Y la avenida que cruza por esta comunidad la usa el tráfico como si fuera un freeway.
And the street that goes through this community, people use it as a freeway.
No conocen una patrulla de policía, de sheriff, de highway patrol.
They don't see a police car, a sheriff's car, or highway patrol car.
Entonces esta, esta situación es, es de alto riesgo ahí en el, por la Burbank Avenue.
Therefore, this community in Burbank Avenue, it's a very dangerous community.
Y como mencioné, no hay ni siquiera un parque. Los niños que hay ahí, que son muchos, juegan en las yardas de sus casas a un lado de esta avenida, la Burbank, que, que es transitada con velocidades muy altas.
Therefore, children who live in this community have to play in their front yards because there's no park and the cars speed by that street.
Y eso, no me lo platicaron ellos. Cuando, cuando yo he tenido reuniones con ellos, he visto cómo pasa el tráfico de recio.
When I've had meetings with this community, I see how fast the traffic flows through, through that street.
Creo que el supervisor de este distrito y la comunidad tienen mucho que trabajar.
I believe the supervisor for this community and the, and that community have to work very hard to improve it.
Quiero reconocer al señor Ryan Allsup por estar trabajando con nosotros en estos asuntos.
I would like to thank Mr. Ryan for working for us, with us.
Y, y le voy a, le voy a pedir que le rasque a la, la caja de, a la caja de los, de los recursos para que, uh, puedan llevar un pequeño parque a esta comunidad.
And I would like him and the supervisors to scratch a little bit on that box of funding so they can come and help us in our community.
Okay, gracias y yo creo que vamos a seguir por aquí.
Thank you and I think we'll be around.
Gracias. Are there any others?
Alguien más?
Okay, we're going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and return to the board for, uh, comment and actions. The CAO, Allsup, would you like to say something first?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I'll be quick. I just wanted to, um, basically say, as you know, um, you know, these are all real issues, um, for, for these communities. And it, the challenge is daunting in some parts of our county. Uh, it, it is not easy to address all the need that we have across 8,000 square miles in California's third largest county by area. It, it's daunting. I think if there were, uh, students sitting in the room, this would be a good, uh, sort of demonstration of what government does. And, you know, the pot that we have to fund all of these things is smaller than it was before and we're challenged. Uh, but with that said, I do want to say that anytime this group, uh, asks to meet with our office, and I know that you all know this, uh, we meet with them. Uh, in fact, we've had several meetings, right? Many. And we'll have, we'll continue to have, uh, many more. And, uh, we talk about the issues. Uh, there has been considerable investment, uh, I'd like to say, i- in that area, uh, in, in my time, uh, that, that started before I got here, but sort of s- investment that I became aware of. Uh, our director of public works and speak to the investment that has been made in, in, uh, walkability and sidewalks and, in, uh, infrastructure down there. It's been considerable. I know that there's been at least a couple of million dollars spent on flood to address flood issues in that area just the past, uh, fiscal year. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, putting, uh, really redoing three parks, uh, thanks to Supervisor Perez, uh, prior to the, the change in districts. But three parks in the area, Rexland Acres is getting, uh, new playground surface, new shade structures, new surface for basketball courts. Uh, all the sand is being replaced with wood chips and they're getting, uh, uh, a dedicated staff for graffiti abatement. Greenfield Park, uh, we're replacing playground surfaces, getting new shade structures, replacing the sand. Uh, we are retrofitting a parking lot that is abused by race cars and people doing donuts and stuff uh, with speed bumps and wheel stops, uh, dedicated staff for graffiti abatement. Lamont Park, we're replacing playground surface, adding shade structures, uh, new surface for basketball courts, uh, wood chips. This isn't, uh, meant to say we're doing everything that, that it is you need, but it's meant to, to be a signal, I think from the board, to you that we understand the things that you are, um, advocating, as we've said before. Uh, we are, these projects are going to be done in a month to a month and a half. Uh, we will do more. If you want a soccer park in that area, I told you how we can get there. Let's, let's do it. Let's do a soccer park. Let's get together, create a plan and figure out how, uh, we go forward. But you can't go forward without a plan and we, uh, have committed to talking with you about that. Spray park, that's a great idea out in that area. You really need it. And let's talk about a plan to do that. Let's, uh, once we have a plan, then we can find out how to fund it. Maybe we can get some partners to help us out with that. But we're, we're, uh, prepared to talk to you all about that. Now, the last thing I'd like to say is your board, in the last budget, demonstrated your, uh, I, I thought during, uh, the, uh, a fiscal crisis, extraordinary effort to set aside $2 million in one-time funding, capital funding, uh, for parks. And that was a signal from you that, uh, you get it and you understand that parks are important to quality of life. Most, I think you'd be challenged to find areas of this county that are not disadvantaged. Uh, the entire county, as far as I can tell, qualify for Calavero Screen 3.0. The vast majority of the county qualifies for it. Um, most of this county is disadvantaged. Uh, most of what we do as a county, our business is dealing with the disadvantaged as the safety net. But, uh, your board set aside $2 million in funding. Uh, Gustavo was asked and, uh, Ms. Leal has asked, how are we, how are we spending that money? And I tell them, uh, we don't know yet. Uh, that money was specifically by your board set aside and is being used to leverage, uh, millions of dollars more in state grants as we speak. Uh, there is a parks bond that, uh, just passed. Uh, this $2 million that was set aside could turn quickly into $12 million. Uh, we have current grant applications out with the state, uh, for, uh, another $500,000. So we're using it to build on it so that we have a pot of money to go to, to make some real investments in our parks. So I, with that, I'll leave it to you.
Supervisor Couch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I don't know if all of them, every speaker was talking about an issue that was in the fourth district, but almost all of them, I think, were. And, um, based on the, what Supervisor Perez was speaking to, the recent, uh, redistricting, I want you to know that I view that and all the issues that you brought forward today, um, as a real challenge. And I want you to know that I have been, I agree with you that Lamont needs, specifically Lamont. Um, there's, there's lots of places that need, need help, but I, we have been through that. We drove out there very early on when we knew we were going to be redistricting and I think in a matter of minutes, we counted 145 potholes. I mean, it was, it, to me, it was almost like a war zone. It was literally the worst road system in the county, I think, in, in, at least in a pretty small area. And we have attempted to, you're right, those patches on those, on those potholes are not meant to be, um, a forever fix and they, they would never will be. We've attempted to, to make a little bit of an impact, uh, out there. But what I want you to know is we have some ideas, um, that we will be, be bringing forward to you and we want your, uh, we want to explain them to you and answer your questions about them and get your input on them. Um, but specifically, following up on what Mr. Allsup just said, specifically on roads and on parks, could I get, is Mr. Pope here today? Could you pop up to the microphone for just a moment? And all I really need you to do is, I want to ask if you would be willing to do this. Could you come back to us, um, in a few weeks or a month or so and just sort of lay out all of the, addressing all the concerns you just heard, lay out all the things that have recently been done that may be in the progress and some other projects that you have scheduled, but you, no one has seen them yet. So people can expect.
Through the chairs, Supervisor Couch, I'd be glad to do that and I'll, uh, give a brief report on the need that's out there throughout the county.
Okay. And then I'd like to work with you on, my staff and I are putting together a few ideas, but we're going to need to run those by the professional staff to make sure they're actually good ideas. Um, so with you and your staff, Lorelei and the CAO, I would, I would love if we could come up with, as Mr. Allsup says, before we run out and start spending a lot of money on things, we need a plan. And how do we fund them and what specifically are we funding first? Um, I would love to put that in place and I would like to do it very quickly if we could. So, we heard you, thank you, Mr. Pope. We heard you and, uh, I look forward to trying to address each of the concerns that you just brought up. Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if you just need a motion to, um, adopt the preliminary budget, uh, I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch.
And the, and the reason for that motion is we need a, a budget in place as of June 30th. It's not that we didn't hear your concerns, but we have to have a spending plan in place and this is the preliminary budget for that. We will not be adopting the final budget towards the end of August. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's an important clarification. We are compelled by state law to have in place an adopted budget and we can adjust that budget as we go forward, but we must have that in place by the end of June, which is just a few days from now. So thank you for that clarification, Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you again for the remarks on the parks. Uh, I have every faith that your new supervisor will pursue all of this to the fullest based on what I'm seeing and all of the energy coming out of, uh, this new process. So I'm excited and encouraged about the future. Uh, if you recall, in Lamont, we raised private dollars to fix up Lamont Park. It was the first step of a grant process in order to find different sources of funding because the county simply doesn't have a lot of the money to do a lot of this. But it doesn't mean we don't have some money that can't be leveraged and matched throughout the state and even at the federal level. So when we, when we raised 40,000, uh, Tahone gave us 10,000, Chevron gave us 10,000, PG&E, a number of folks came in and said, "We want to help build up this park." We raised $40,000. We got a matching grant and as soon as we got the ball rolling, uh, we ended up getting a federal grant for lighting and walkways and making that park beautiful. We replaced all the playground equipment. We put in, um, child-safe, uh, gear and even, even, um, equipment for disabled kids at that particular, uh, park. Uh, not that all of them are disabled kid-friendly, but some of it is. And so we did that by joining in the federal dollars, the state dollars, and then of course, a county match, but a lot of private dollars as well. So I want to thank Patricia Gustavo, uh, who continued to improve the process of addressing your government, asking for a better and more productive relationship with your government and in making relationships with the people like Craig Pope and Lorelei and of course Ryan Allsup, who I think has been extraordinary in meeting with the community and engaging the community. Everyone I know who meets with him says they feel listened to. They feel as though he cares about their concerns and Ryan, I am so grateful for that. Thank you for being that face for the county, uh, recognizing the all-times, all-too-easily brutal news that we don't have a lot of money to spend on this. But when we're smart and when we have a plan, we can leverage what we have, private community members who care about this community but need to be engaged and given opportunities to do more for the community. I think... given opportunities to do more for the community. I think we are remarkably generous in this regard. So, again, thank you. I feel very confident in this process moving forward. None of us will get everything we ask for or want, but this is the healthiest relationship I've seen between activists, passionate members of the community, who live and breathe, finding results for the community, and of course, your government. So, I'm very encouraged. I think it will continue to improve, again, to your new supervisor and to our CIO. I'm excited about what the future holds. So, thank you.
You just punched in again. Did you mean to do that?
Sorry, Chairman. I guess I'll second Supervisor Couch's motion.
Thank you. Raar La Caja de Dinero, "Scratch the Box of Money." Mr. Valencia, that was a very good comment. "We will scratch the box of money." He's showing us how to scratch the box of money. Very good. So we have a motion. And a second, are there any other comments before we proceed with the vote? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Muchas gracias. Next is item number 31, which is a proposed assessment advance agreement with the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority, and who is going to initiate that discussion with us? Mr. Alsup, do you have a comment to make regarding item number 31 before we proceed with, with Mr.?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I was looking the other way. No. Alan Christensen, Assistant CEO, and our office will handle this.
Mr. Christensen, could you please proceed?
There it is. Chairman Maggard, members of the board, Alan Christensen with the CIO's office. This item before you is, well, first of all, let me say that the county is a participant in the Kuyama Groundwater Basin Authority and the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority, as we have territory in both, county territory in both of those basins, groundwater basins. Both those agencies were recently formed via state law. The SIGMA law required these groundwater sustainability agencies to be formed. Both those agencies are incurring costs related to develop of a groundwater sustainability plan or GSP as required by state regulations. You're going to get lots of alphabet soup here. SIGMA is the, is the groundwater law for short. Your board has supported these efforts in both these basins, in both time and staffing, staffing and funding, pardon me, to help them implement the new regulations. At this time, the agencies are assessing their members and asking for funds to do, to pay for the GSP or groundwater sustainability plan. The estimated total funding that is proposed today is from, from the county's general fund is $538,889 in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2017-18. The funding would come from reserves in the general fund. First, the first basin is the Kuyama Basin Groundwater Authority. A portion of, a very small portion of Kern County is in that basin. That land is primarily grazing land. There are also some agricultural companies that operate in the basin. The Kuyama Basin GSA consists of the counties of Kern, Santa Barbara, Ventura, and San Luis Obispo County, and in addition to some smaller agencies, local ones. The GSA is receiving grant funds from the state, from the Department of Water Resources, to offset the costs of the GSP. However, there is still a shortfall, and so the members are assessed some amounts to cover the remaining balance of cost. Kern County's contribution assessment is $38,889 and is requested so that the Kuyama Basin can meet its cash flow needs, which are significant. This one-time payment represents the final financial commitment from the board for this basin. The Indian Wells Groundwater Authority is, of which a county, the county is a member, hired a general consulting firm, an engineering consulting firm, to, with expertise to coordinate and prepare a groundwater plan. And funding to pay for that consultant and administration comes from three sources currently. The initial contributions from members, the five members of that agency, $75,000 each, and then, in addition, a DWR, or Department of Water Resources, grant from, to the county of $250,000, and an advance from the Indian Wells Valley Water District of $500,000. So they've had funding, but that funding is, is running dry, is, has virtually run out or will in a few months. The grant from DWR is paid on a reimbursement basis. Well, let me, let me back up. There's an additional grant that's coming from the state for Proposition 1 funds. That, that funding will not be available probably until the first of the year, or at least reimbursements coming back from the state until the first of the year. In fact, our experience with DWR is it can take five to seven months to get reimbursed from the current grant that we receive for, from DWR. So that, that revenue source is slow in coming. The, the proposal we have before you today is to, for an initial $500,000 advance to close the funding gap created by the delay of, of an extraction fee. So the other revenue source that's available that is, that is being worked on in the Indian Wells Valley is an extraction fee or a pump fee. The first reading for that pump fee was, was had on last Thursday, and we anticipate that that will be in place soon. So there's some belief that these funds, if loaned from the county, the $500,000 would be repaid. But the timing of those, those funds is, is, will be again several months, and so the surety of that has caused us to treat this advance as, as a contribution rather than a loan. And so it is, it is considered a contribution. In addition, the, as I mentioned, there's a $1.5 million grant from DWR. Again, that's slow incoming. The proposed advanced, assessment advance agreement with the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority has been prepared by county council and establishes the purpose and payment mechanism for funding, for the funding capital advance. The budgetary action for this item is to cancel the designation for infrastructure account 2156 in the general fund and establish appropriation in the special services budget unit account 7500 in the amount of $538,889. Therefore, it's recommended that your board approve the proposed assessment advanced agreement with the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority and cancel the designation in the general fund, authorize the auditor controller to process the specified budgetary, budgetary adjustments and accounting transactions, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do any board members wish to comment or ask a question before we go to the public? Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment to us with regard to item number 31, this proposed assessment advance agreement with the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority? I don't see anyone indicating such, so let's return to the board. Are there questions or comments by the board? Supervisor Gleason?
That's me. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Christensen. My understanding of the, let's talk about the Indian Wells Valley piece, is it's a $500,000 authorization, meaning we're not transferring money out. We're just, we're just having that money available in case the groundwater authority needs it in order to manage its cash flow issues until a pump fee has been established and we have incoming revenue. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, although I'd say, I'd go a little further to say that it is likely to be drawn upon within the next few months.
So, let's talk about that pump fee. I want to instill some confidence in this board that the plan is, it's more than a hope. I mean, there is a plan that we have in place that should the groundwater authority draw down this, what do you call it, a contribution or a loan? You say I'll call it a contribution?
We call it an advance, an assessment advance, yeah.
Okay. So we have a pumping fee, a volumetric fee, that we have, are in the process of establishing an ordinance to charge water users to build up a revenue in order to offset these costs and repay this contribution. So we had a first reading of an ordinance last week to establish a $30 per acre foot pumping fee on water that's extracted by our major non-dominimus users in the valley, of which I think there's like 71 players. So we are in the process of establishing that, that ordinance. That ordinance requires a first reading, which we had. It will require an informational meeting, which we have scheduled for early July. We will have a second reading and adoption of that ordinance in, in our July meeting. And then, following that, there's a, there's a waiting period for 30 days before we can actually start collecting. So we're anticipating that pumping fee to be, in effect, adopted in July, and then revenues established sometime in the September timeframe. I'm guessing September, maybe October. So, the vote for a, this is not without issue, and I need the board to be completely aware. The vote for the initial reading of that ordinance was 4, 0, and 1. There was the city that was abstained, that abstained from the vote. So it was not unanimous, but it was, there was no votes against it. Establishment of that ordinance. It's a difficult cultural issue that we are managing in the Indian Wells Valley. There are, there are forces up there that are opposed to this pumping fee. They're opposed to SIGMA. There are really no logic behind their opposition other than a steadfast belief in themselves, and they don't recognize the state's authority to impose regulation on their use of water. And they obviously don't understand the dilemma that the Indian Wells Valley is faced with. So there is headwinds to what we're doing and to the success of our ordinance, and that's why you used the term "hopeful" in our plan to pay back this loan. I'd say it's significantly more than hopeful. I think it's, it's a reality. I'm not worried about it. I just need the board to be fully aware of the climate that we're dealing with up there so that we can make the best decision and protect the treasury of the Kern County. I'm fully in support of this contribution, and I will make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion. Are there any other questions by other members of the board? Supervisor Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question is, and I, I think Supervisor Gleason is right. I think it is highly likely that that's what's going to happen. Assume for a second that it doesn't. I'm just, public, I don't know what the, what are our options? What's the next step if that doesn't happen?
Through your chair.
I don't think there are good ones.
Yeah. Through your chair, Supervisor Couch, you would know pretty quickly, within, within 30 days, whether the, the ordinance to pass a fee passes or not.
From today.
And then, but if, so if that were to pass, it's just a collection, the, the risk then is collection of the fee.
Right.
So you could always have some holdouts that, you know, we're, you know, pitchforks and torches, and, you know, where you're not, you're not going to assess us. I don't know how they would be able to do that. If it were not to pass, I think the good news is that if the board felt uncomfortable with that, they could, they could come back and have discussions with the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority to, to make some changes. They will not need to draw on the, these cash reserves right away.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. I'll second your motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Scrivener had already seconded the motion. Yeah. So thank you, Supervisor Couch. Any other questions by board members? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Next is item number 32, which is a proposed urgency ordinance amending section 17.32.026, a number of sections. Mr. Nations, would you please give us a brief explanation so we can proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deputy Kinder Graham from my office has been deeply involved in this and is heading up this effort, and she's going to make the presentation.
Ms. Graham?
Thank you. On November 15, 2016, your board enacted ordinance G8670, which repealed and added new chapters to Title 17, which is the Code of Building Regulations. Prior to the adoption of ordinance G8670, Chapter 17.32 of Title 17, which is the Kern County Fire Code, contained sections involving illegal fireworks, penalties for illegal fireworks, and social host liability. Ordinance G8670 effectively repealed all of Chapter 17.32 and replaced it with a new Chapter 17.32, which inadvertently removed any reference to illegal fireworks, social host liability, and penalties for use of illegal fireworks. There was no intent on the part of the Kern County Fire Department, and it is believed there is no intent on the part of your board to remove and/or revise such sections. Due to the widespread use of illegal fireworks during and around the Fourth of July holiday, it is imperative that the inadvertently removed sections in the fire code be reinstated immediately so that the fire department can continue its enforcement activities related to the use of illegal fireworks during and around this Fourth of July holiday. Your board has the requisite authority pursuant to Government Code Section 25131 and 25123 to immediately, upon introduction, adopt an urgency ordinance for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. In light of the foregoing and considering the potential for fires, injury, and death from the use of illegal fireworks, there is an immediate need, and it is prudent to enact an urgency ordinance reinstating language regarding illegal fireworks and administrative penalties for multiple-time offenders and social hosts, which was inadvertently repealed during adoption of ordinance G8670. Therefore, it is recommended that your board introduce the proposed urgency ordinance, waive the reading, make findings, that further environmental review of the proposed urgency ordinance is not needed and/or exempt pursuant to Sections 15060C2, 15061B3, 15307, 15308, and 15321 of the State Sequel Guidelines, and enact the proposed urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment regarding this matter? I'll return to the board then. Colleagues, what is your pleasure?
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Next is item number 36, which is a response to a request for a status report on the operational administrative analysis of the Kern County Fire Department. We're joined by our chief, Brian Marshall. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman Maggard, members of the board. Give me one moment here. This item is an update on the operational and administrative analysis of the Kern County Fire Department. On January 9, 2018, the Center for Public Safety Management presented to your board the final report for this operational administrative analysis. 62 recommendations were made in five categories. It included organization, management, and personnel, facilities and capital, planning and risk management, operations, dispatch and deployment, and lastly, training and prevention. The Center for Public Safety Management had a project methodology that we work with to make sure that they received the data that they needed. They did a thorough review of the department's organizational structure and deployment practices. Deployment is how we have the fire stations and the equipment to respond to emergencies. They did a detailed analysis of our response and workload, the busiest times of the day, busiest times of the week, how our fire stations responded to wildland fires. They spent a week here working with, working and interviewing fire department staff. They visited fire stations and really did a in-depth analysis during that week. They spent a lot of time with county staff also, in the CIO's office, to verify and obtain additional information. Their initial observations in the report were that the Kern County Fire Department was an excellent organization. was an excellent organization. We have dedicated personnel, and we're committed to serve, and I highly agree with that. We have a very complex service environment. That is very true. We cover 8,000 square miles, metropolitan, small cities, rural frontier area, and when we have an incident such as the Erskine Fire, we deploy a lot of resources, not only from our fire stations, but our air and wildland division. They determined there were no quick fixes regarding our financial issues as presented in the budget hearings. We do have a structural deficit, and a large part of that are pension cost. We do have the partnership efforts with Bakersfield City Fire Department, CAL FIRE, Halle Ambulance, who we interact with almost on a daily basis. We are a contract county for CAL FIRE, so we protect the state lands here in Kern County. And we also interact with the U.S. Forest Service on the Sequoia National Forest and the Los Padres National Forest. They did determine that our traditional management systems of the Kern County Fire Department needed to be reevaluated. So, where we're at today, we've completed a thorough review of all the 62 recommendations. Obviously, with our structural deficit, we've prioritized recommendations that immediately save money, and we're working on other recommendations. So, I'm going to discuss five priority recommendations that will help guide us in the future. Again, as presented during the budget hearings by the CAO's office, we need to come up with a five-year plan to make the fire department physically stable. So, recommendation number nine was moving towards cost recovery for our hazardous materials program and consider seeking financial support from those companies within Kern County that store, transport, and incorporate hazardous substance within their operations. So, unknown estimate at this time, we're working with Public Health Services. I've talked to Matt Constantine, the director, how we could integrate with the COUPA program. That's the inspections of hazardous materials and being able to bill through that program and then money transferred to the fire department budget to support our hazardous materials response program. We're reviewing all the cost of our hazmat program in order that we can develop some sort of methodology that we could put forward for billing. Once we get all of this worked out with Public Health and fire department staff, we will bring a fee structure and an implementation plan to your board. I expect that to be within the next two months. Recommendation number 16, this is the aircraft rescue and firefighting program that we provide to Meadows Field and Enyu Kern Airport. So, Meadows Field, we spend $1.5 million a year annually to protect Meadows Field. That's under FAA Part 139, that when you have passenger service coming into an airport, our services are required. And Enyu Kern, I'm happily... I'm happy to say that on July 10, we'll be terminating our agreement for our services at Enyu Kern Airport, and we've completed a lease to lease back the fire station that was built with FAA grant funds. That's going to save us $466,000 a year. So, we'll be bringing that before your board on July 10. The fire department's also working with the county administrative office and Meadows Field executive staff to figure out some sort of implementation plan where Meadows Field pays for our services from the Kern County Fire Department. Recommendation 34 was the Kern County Fire Department should develop a comprehensive strategic business plan. We're in agreement with that. We did put $20,000 in our budget for this upcoming fiscal year in order to hire a consultant that will help guide us through. Our plan is to use a customer-centered strategic plan process, working through our accreditation partners. We want to get our stakeholders involved. If we're going to have any plan going forward in the future, we need to get our stakeholders involved to make sure that we're servicing them the way they need to be serviced. Recommendation 52, the Kern County Fire Department should consider the implementation of an in-service fire company inspection fee. Right now, we only bill for fire prevention inspections performed by the Fire Prevention Division. These are the inspections where our firefighters and the fire station go out and inspect buildings. The revenue estimate on that is $720,000 annually, and staff's working on a new fee structure to bring forward to your board. Again, that will be coming to your board within the next two months. Recommendation 53, utilization of civilian fire inspector... Fire prevention inspectors and plan reviewers in the Fire Prevention Division. We have hired two civilians and deleted two fire engineers positions. We were working on a plan, and Mr. Alsop brought up some kind of out-of-the-box ideas on what we can do in fire prevention that we hadn't looked at. So, now, we're kind of going back and looking at that to see if we can streamline while meeting the needs of our customers. So, we're working diligently on that one. There were recommendations regarding the MOU with the firefighters' union, and we're currently in discussions with that labor group. Our next step, we're going to continue implementing these priority recommendations that I've brought forward. The ones that save money, we hope to get done in the next two or three months. The strategic plan, we'll go through an RFP process and bring in a consultant to work with that. We're continuing negotiations with the firefighters' union. We're going to identify the next priority recommendations, and then I'll be before your board and the public on a monthly basis on the status of what we have implementing and the current plan. So, my commitment, my staff's commitment, is we're going to continue to work through the 62 recommendations. We're going to work with the CAO's office and the firefighters' union as we make sure that we're all on the same page and we can make the fire department financially stable for the future. So, that concludes my presentation. Therefore, it's recommended that your board hear the presentation and receive and file. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions by members of the board before I go to the public? Any members of the public like to make comment to us about item number 32? No, I'm sorry, 36. 36, the chief's report. Don't see anyone, so I'll return to the board. Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Chairman. Thanks, Chief. This is a great first step. Appreciate it. So, my understanding is that every month, you're going to come to this board and you're going to... We're going to sit back, and you're going to take piece by piece by piece of those 62 recommendations, and you're going to either accept, reject them, tell us what you like, what you don't like, and we'll power through that, and hopefully, that will get you to where we want to be in terms of an effective, appropriately-sized organization that meets our needs. So, thanks.
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, exactly. We'll be before your board on a monthly basis, reporting in-depth on the 62 recommendations and where we are with them and how they're coming, and receive your board's guidance on moving this project forward.
Thank you. My guidance is going to be something like similar to this. I enjoyed what you said about hazmat. That's obviously, I guess, that's an easy fruit that you're going after, it seems to be, and you gave us no real dollars associated with that because you don't know, and you gave us no real dates. So, I'm very interested in exactly what we're talking, our band of dollars that we're talking about that you're targeting, and then I'm really not... In order to achieve a goal, you need a date. And for each of these five recommendations, I didn't hear any dates. So, I would like for you to put a date. Two months is not a date. You said hazard plan should be in two months. You said the ATRIP-AAT, the AF deal, there were no dates, although you had completed the Enyu Kern transformation, which I applaud you and your staff on. The strategic business plan, you said something about an RFP. Do we need to do an RFP for a strategic business plan, or do we have the skills and talents within in-house to do that? Do you have an answer to that question?
I would have to check with purchasing Supervisor Gleason to make sure that we follow all of the purchasing rules, but we can bring that forward on July 10 and give your board the exact plan for the consultant.
You also talked about stakeholders. You want to involve your stakeholders in building your business plan. That sounds really good, but I don't understand it. What stakeholders and who are they, what are they, and how are they going to contribute to the betterment of your plan?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, one agency there or one group of stakeholders that we work with is the Cattlemen's Association. They graze their cattle on the wildland areas. When we have wildland fires, we're burning up their profits, their food for their cattle. So, when you talk about... When I talk about engaging stakeholders, I want to make sure that we're doing everything for all the different groups that we serve. Again, we're a very complex organization. We protect cities, the frontier, rural areas, and I want to make sure we engage the stakeholder and get all of the stakeholder input. So, we do have a good plan going forward.
Again, that sounds good to me. I give that to you guys to figure out, but I'd be very interested on a date when you're going to have the plan completed, a date you're going to have the first meeting. Who are your stakeholders? What is your outlook for this? Is this strategic business plan the same five-year plan that you're talking about to CAO's office?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, it will incorporate portions of what a five-year financial plan would be, but this is also, you know, how we, you know, interact with our customers. So, it'll be both, and my commitment is we'll come back on July 10 at the next board meeting and answer your questions in depth.
So, I like it. I like the fact that not only is your strategic... Your strategy about building a financial plan to accommodate your budget requirements, but also the needs of the community so that you can fold those in together and really create something that is effective and will serve our county well. I like that a lot. It's a bigger thing, but it drives me to another question about the five-year plan, and this is for the CAO's office. Are we... How are we arrived? How are we getting at that five-year plan? Can we talk a little bit about that five-year plan? Do we have... Can you talk about that, Mr. CAO?
Yeah. Chairman Maggard, Supervisor Gleason, what I would say is that we believe it's necessary for the fire department to have a five-year financial plan. So, similar to your deficit, your four-year deficit mitigation effort in the general fund, something similar for fire. So, identifying, you know, a five-year period, and with each year, what are the changes to be made to save a certain amount of money? You know, that plan would have projections. That plan would consider all of these recommendations that the chief is talking about today. It would include all of that stuff. I would say that this plan, financial plan, five-year, would be different than a business plan, but they could be co-mingled, but they are two really kind of distinct efforts. And I think this five-year plan is something that we need to be to ensure that, and we believe it will be, ensure that the fire department is working super close. I put the word "super" in there purposely, super close, closely with our office, just as if we were part of the crew over there, sitting in the office, looking at the financials. I think that we want to help fire. We want to make them successful, obviously, and I think that would be a... Having a super tight relationship on development of that financial plan that's needed must be there.
So, do you agree with what he just said, Chief?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, yes, sir.
Okay. So, I like it too. It's a strategic plan, but part, a component of that strategic plan is going to be the finances, and that finances is going to be outlined in a five-year financial plan that is going to be created when? Do we have a date on when that five-year financial plan will be submitted for approval? Does this board need to approve that financial plan, or does the chief approve that financial plan? Who approves that financial plan?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, there's quite a bit that would have to be done before we can get a good picture. One of the things that the chief's going to have to do is complete his analysis of how he's going to incorporate the items that he can that are not negotiated-type items. It is imperative, as you indicated, that there is a date structure to that because we have to put it into a fiscal year timeframe, and I'm sure that there's challenges for him on implementation so we can come up with ideas, that type of thing, but having those set dates to meet both statutory-driven timeframes that we have to comply with and then his timeframe to implement it with his... In his organization, those are all in-depth conversations we still need to have to really get a timeframe where we can get that five-year outlook. I think the numbers for us are fairly... We have a generally good idea of what costs are. It's the savings that he looks to achieve and the revenue sources that are new that would be added to those numbers. So, I don't think it would take long once he gets a good understanding of how he intends to move forward. So, I would hope in the next six to eight months that we would have a good idea of what that plan looks like.
Okay. So, who's driving the lead horse here? Is it the financial plan or the strategic business plan? What's the lead horse?
Supervisor Gleason, I think they go hand-in-hand, but the financial plan is the number-one priority.
Okay. So, the financial plan, I heard you say six to eight months. Can we say December 31st? That's six months.
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, I would really have to ask the chief if he thinks that that's doable. On our side, we're ready to go, so...
Chief, is that doable?
Yes, sir.
Why does it say six months? Could it be four or six months okay by you?
I think that ties in with the mid-year budget status, and we have a good idea what our financials are tracking for this upcoming fiscal year in the first six months and working on these. So, I think by the end of the year, we can put together a plan and then bring it to your board right after the first of the year.
Okay. Thanks. Number 52 was the... Which was your one, two, three, fourth recommendation was in-service company inspection fees. Once again, I didn't see any dollars, any granularity with that item, and I didn't see any dates associated with that item. So, I'm looking forward to... I think you're, in terms of concept, you're going the right way here. I just want to see it broken down a parade rest so we can really understand it and the community can understand it. So, what I'm looking for is... I like this idea of having these monthly updates. What I would like to see at the next monthly update is I would like to see a spreadsheet put in front so that people can look at it and say, "Okay, last month, we talked about these..." And I'd be glad to sit down with Chief afterwards and go over this, "But last month, these were our five top priority recommendations. These are the dates assigned to completion of those five recommendations. These are the dollar values we're projecting to be associated with..." And then some way to judge the progress we are in achieving each of those five, and then introduce the next group of recommendations that you're developing. It doesn't have to be five. It can be 20. It could be two, whatever you want to do, but it's going to be able to show us a roadmap of where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. And I think we can collapse that or funnel that all into some type of financial plan so that we can all understand and all build a confidence in the fact that we got this fire budget under control and we'll go in the right direction. Mr. Chairman, you've been very gracious. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to echo a lot of what Supervisor Gleason just said. There's one thing I would like to focus on. Let me back up with a comment, and let me just... And I say this with all due respect to you, Chief, because I think you are a outstanding fire chief. This is taking too long, in my opinion. And we did a study, and we have an action plan, but now we're having another plan, and we can plan this thing to death. The one... I don't know why I like this one, but it just makes sense to me because I think I've heard this, I think I've heard this from the rank and file in the fire department and I've heard it from you. and I've heard it from you, although you, I think you have some reservations about it, which I understand, and that is the civilianization of the, well, it's your plan check, all those, all those folks. So I want to make us, I don't like to get down in the weeds here, but I'm, I'm gonna. I think there's a need for a lean Six Sigma project and that is how a project, development project in the county receives all of its approvals throughout all of the different departments. I don't know how that's done, but I've heard complaints from people who call department, oh, it's not here anymore, we've done our job, it's now gone on to wherever, and they sort of have to chase it down. And I would like us to, if, as best we could, find a sort of a concierge service where once you turn in your plans, you've got one point of contact and that person is going to know where your plans are anytime you need to find out, anytime you have a question. Maybe that's already been done and I don't know it, but in an effort to help the fire department do more civilianization, Zofia, you have a, you have some input on this?
I do, I have to back to Mr. Alsop.
Okay, I'd be happy to have you jump in here. If we're gonna, if we're gonna ask more of the fire department with fewer people, then we ought to do our level best, we collectively do our level best to make sure that we're making that as easy as possible. And that's, that particular item, the civilianization of those, those folks in your admin staff is one that I, I recognize there are negative consequences to it. I'm going to have people, allegedly, they're going to call me and say, it's taking too long to get me through plan check or it's, it's taking too long to do this, that, and the other. But I'm willing to take that heat in exchange for the savings that I think you're going to realize with that. Now, I don't know if you're on the same page as the, as the union is, I don't know if that's a, I don't think that's an item that needs to be negotiated. I think that's something that is in, under your, and I know you've done some of that, but I just want to encourage you, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this, I want to encourage you to do more of that and do it as quickly as possible. Zofia, if you want to provide some input that I'm sure will be of value because I may not know what I'm talking about.
I think you do know what you're talking about. However, Laura Lioviat, Director of Planning and Natural Resources, we work closely with the fire department. Obviously, we work closely with building inspection division. We are right now embarking on our counter, which is one of the places these permits go through. I would be happy to coordinate this. We think highly of the way that the fire department does their permitting. We are working on bringing a Sella online for planning and integrating it where the public could then publicly look to see where their permit is. So I'd be glad to work, we work so closely with them already and we've already been in discussions. So I would be glad to volunteer my department and work on this project.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe I need to get more comfortable with what a strategic business plan is. What is it gonna, what are the nuts and bolts of it? What is it gonna have in it that we don't currently have?
Supervisor Couch through the chair. I think it's going to wrap everything together and give, you know, direction to the fire department on where we're going. Again, meeting with stakeholders and figuring out, are we doing the right things? Are we serving their needs? Your example about development and how building permits, that's part of, you know, our strategic plan. Are we serving our customers? The financial plan is going to be the nuts and bolts, how we make the fire department sustainable in the future. They all kind of wrap together using the analysis, we're going through accreditation, our insurance service review. It kind of wraps it all together and delivers it to your board, what we're doing, how we're doing it in our communities.
Can I sum it up?
Yes, sir.
From my feeble mind, your business plan is going to be how you're going to, how and what services you're going to deliver and how and to whom? And your financial plan is the types of changes the department needs to make to save money, for lack of a better term.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if I'm wrong, tell me. I'm just, I'm trying to.
No, that's, that's a good summary, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I have a question regarding the consultant that you're proposing for the business plan development. Supervisor Gleason asked a question as to whether or not we had the in-house talent available to develop that plan without the use of a consultant. And you explained why, or how you would use the purchasing department to obtain one. You didn't say whether or not you think we have the in-house talent adequate to develop that plan on our own. So I'd like you to address that and I'd like to have a comment from the CAO's office as to whether or not, what his thoughts are on that.
Chairman Maggard and members of the board, I don't want the consultant to do the work for us. I want help in guidance, you know, making sure we stay on track, looking at issues that, you know, we may not be aware of in putting this plan together. Yeah, we do have in-house talent and we will be actively involved with it, but I think using a consultant to help keep us on track, making sure we're covering all of our bases makes the plan more, more valuable and I, I think it will just wrap up the entire project with the financial plan, the strategic business plan and everything that we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Do you, what are your thoughts regarding whether or not an outside consultant is necessary for that purpose? And I'd like you also to address whether or not the chief has the spitting authority to do that on his own or does that question come before this board?
Yeah, Chairman Maggard, I think the chief could probably spend that money on his own to do this. My thoughts are, I obviously think highly of county employees and I think we do have folks that have the ability. I'm not that familiar with the chief and his downline to make any determinations there. I'd leave it up to his judgment. I would say that he might be, it sounds like on, on this business plan, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's an 8,000-square-mile county, he's stakeholder input. It sounds to me like the chief wants somebody full-time, 24/7, thinking about this business plan and helping him. So they're, that, all they're doing is trying to get this thing written up and done as opposed to having somebody who might be doing something on staff also diving into this business plan. I don't know what your thinking is, but if your board suggested to the chief that you didn't want him to go outside for a consultant, we would do all we could to provide staff support to him out of my office to try and put this together.
Thank you, chief. How many employees do you have in your entire department?
Chairman Maggard, we have 500 firefighters, we have about 75 general employees, and then we run about 100 seasonal firefighters.
675 people approximately. I think we can find somebody who can dedicate themselves 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to make sure we're on task about this. So I have concerns about whether or not we spend another dime on a consultant and whether or not we should do that in-house. So before that's done, I'd like you to come back and talk to us about that. Any other questions from the board before we receive and file the report? Supervisor Gleason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to emphasize that in the monthly presentation that you're going to bring forward to us, if, if we can't measure the change in your department, we can't judge its success. So it has to be numbers in front of us to say where we are and where we've got to go and how far along the way we've gotten there and what dates associated with each task. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Do we need, do we need a motion?
A motion to receive and file.
I make that motion to receive and file.
Thank you.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. That concludes this morning's public agenda. We have matters to discuss in closed session and we will reconvene here this afternoon at 2:00 PM. Is there a motion that we closed, that we adjourned to closed session?
So much.
We have a motion by Supervisor Gleason without objection, so ordered. Thank you very much. See you at 2:00.